I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is Bella Vista City Council's special meeting, July 12, 2023. Wanda, could you do the roll call?
Councilmember Snow.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Wasniak.
Here.
Wilms.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Hansel.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to mention to the audience, because this is a special meeting, there is not opportunity for citizen input. For the next matter, I'd like to have a motion to read all the ordinances by title only.
So moved.
Suspend the rules, yeah.
Yeah, so moved.
It's Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wilms.
The reference card to motion to suspend the rules and reading ordinances on the agenda by Ty Lundling.
Yes.
Motion by Fowler, second by...
Wilms, Larry Wilms.
Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Thank you. Before we get started with the first ordinance, I'd like to give folks a brief summary of how we got here. Back in 2022, some citizens complained to the mayor and council about short-term rentals. So the council worked on a short-term rental ordinance for most of 2022 calendar year. In December 2022, council passed a short-term rental ordinance. On June 26, 2023, Judge Christine Horwart ruled that ordinance passed in 2022 was unconstitutional, but she didn't say why or provide any detail or guidance. So the city has 30 days to appeal that ruling to the State Supreme Court. So as I see it, our choices at this point are as follows. We could appeal to the State Supreme Court. We could pass a new ordinance and repeal the existing ordinance, or we could do nothing. I am proposing a new ordinance and repeal the 2022 ordinance to be effective immediately. Some of the things the new ordinance has, it says nothing about septic, it has no safety inspection, it has no insurance requirement, the definition of a bedroom is per the fire code, and per Section 3E of the new ordinance, applicants under the old ordinance are good under the new ordinance. There is, for your information, 149 permits have been issued and 144 permits are pending. So why are we doing this? There's a number of reasons we could do this. One is, it's what many residents have indicated that they want some regulation of short-term rentals. Knowing where the short-term rentals are helps the place and public safety, and it also helps assure that the taxes are paid on the short-term rentals. So I'm sure there's other reasons, but I just wanted to give that brief summary, and now I'll read the first ordinance by title only. Providing regulations for the operation of short-term rentals, providing a permit requirement, limiting the number of active permits which may be issued, providing occupancy limits, providing penalties and a process for revocation of permits for violations, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. So would someone on council like to discuss? Wendy?
Hey, so I have some notes if I look down, I apologize. Sorry about that. So I do have a few questions and some statements. I'm questioning why we're having a special meeting for this rather than adding it to the agenda for next week's work session. I do understand that last year, we did, we all sat through hours and hours of public comments, and some might feel that everything that could have been said has been said. I'm going to argue that that's someone's feelings. It's our job as elected officials to give the respect to the public and let them speak and let them be heard. I know there's this feeling in the community that the last ordinance, for lack of a better term, was kind of rammed through before new council members could vote on it. It's actions kind of like these that do cause citizens to distrust their government. I do make it clear that I like the ordinance as it has been proposed. I think it's pretty reasonable, and I think it's really similar to Mr. Burke's proposal from last year, which I also really liked. And at face value, I'd vote for this during a normal meeting. I do have some questions that I've received from members of the community that I said I would push forward. First, are there any liability risks to the city if we don't have inspections?
Is there what?
Any liability risks to the city if we don't have inspections?
No.
Perfect. And then, the previous permits timeline, so if someone obtained a permit previously, like say on March 15 of 2023, are they going to expire on March, or would it be per the new date of adoption?
If you look at, in the draft, on second page, it would be Section 3E, which the mayor referenced earlier. I'll just read that to you. "Notwithstanding any provision of this ordinance to the contrary, any applicant granted a permit or awaiting action on a permit application to operate a short-term rental under the purported authority of any prior ordinance of the city shall be deemed to have a permit for purposes of this ordinance for the occupancy number provided therein or such greater number as would be allowed pursuant to provisions of this ordinance for a period of one year from the effective date of this ordinance."
Perfect, thank you. And then I'd asked Chief Sims about this previously, about the definition of a bedroom per the fire code, because I did not know what that was. And for brevity, it is basically 70 square feet for a bedroom for a single occupancy. You add 50 square feet for every additional occupancy for that room, and also points of egress, like the window has to be, I think, 36 inches, and that sort of thing. What would cause a permit to be denied?
Well, not paying the fee, not providing the information that's required in the ordinance, or being an application that was made after 600 had already been adopted.
Perfect. And then, if we don't have any inspections, how will we know how many bedrooms a home has?
You won't.
Okay, so basically it's word of...
Word of the applicant.
Perfect. And then, final kind of question, the two for, are we wanting this to go third and final today, and if so, what is the course of action if this does not go third and final today?
Whether there's an intention, that'll have to become up to, that's up to you and the mayor, so I would direct you to ask the mayor that question. If we do not proceed to a further reading at this special meeting, this proposal would be on second reading at your regular meeting this month.
Perfect.
I would like to just mention a couple things. The reason we did this on a special meeting rather than wait for the regular meeting is because we only have so many days to file an appeal, and we had to figure out if we're doing this or if we're appealing. And that goes doubly for, you know, going to second reading. We need to do this, or we're going to have to go ahead with the appeal, basically. It's just a timing issue, giving Jason a time to do the documents and whatnot. Jerry?
Well, there's no doubt about it that I have spoke against this ordinance from the very beginning. I myself and another councilman tried to keep this ordinance from being passed, but it passed anyway. So the new ordinance, I've read the new ordinance, and it appears to be basically a copy of the old ordinance with just some items left out. My question to the city attorney would be, if the previous ordinance was determined to be unconstitutional, and we turn around and pass this one with basically the same ordinance with just some items left out, what are the possibilities of the council being held in contempt accordingly?
It's not the same ordinance. There, it's more to it than just some things being left out. There's a lot of similarity in terms of what's in there, but this is a different ordinance. So you are enjoined from enforcing ordinance 2022-18, and so by legislating a new ordinance that is different, it is my opinion you are not subject to contempt. But I will also say this, there are people challenging this, and they're probably going to try to say that you are.
Okay.
Doesn't mean that would be successful.
Well, okay, in my, then, in my opinion, which is strictly my opinion, again, you say the ordinance is different. I mean, it appears to be basically the same. So again, you say it's different, it appears to be basically the same. So we have all taken an oath to uphold the Constitution of the state of Arkansas as well as the United States Constitution. So if we turn around and pass this ordinance, then are we violating our oath? Again, if...
No.
If, well, if this, if this ordinance should happen to be determined to be unconstitutional because, in my opinion, it's basically a copy of the other one, are we violating our...
No.
We're not, okay?
No.
All right. I have...
It's not the same, no matter how many times you say it. It's not the same.
I understand it's not the same, but again, the format is basically, all of it is basically with some things left out. You said there's some more clarity, yep, clarity, some more clarity, but again, basically the format is the same, but in my opinion, as I said, in my opinion. I am not against a, an ordinance, a regulation ordinance. I wish that we could come to a agreement where we would have a simple registration ordinance. This may be considered a simple registration ordinance. It still calls for a permit. I think it is discriminatory in that it singles out the short-term rental group but does not include long-term rentals. Again, if we're going to pass an ordinance of this type, I think it should include all of it, not just the short-term. I, there are a few items. Yeah, proof that the applicant has met the requirements of the Advertising and Promotion Commission. What are the requirements of the Advertising and Promotion Commission?
Well, you left out part of it. It's proof that the applicant has met the requirements of the Advertising and Promotion Commission for collection of local A and P taxes.
Right.
It's right there. They have to show that they have, that they have registered, that they have met their qualifications, that they have contacted them, and they have in fact been providing something or had been providing something that shows that they have an account to pay taxes to A and P.
Should that not be a part of the ordinance, what the requirements are?
That's handled in other law, the requirement to pay your taxes and all of that.
So the requirement is just simply they have paid their taxes?
I don't want to be a part of the debate, so I would encourage you all to debate each other and not try to debate me.
All right, so that's a question I have, is the, is the requirements for proof of meeting the requirements, A and P Commission. If the applicant is denied a permit, the, they have an opportunity to appeal that denial to the mayor. I think that would be more appropriate because all other commissions, their, any denial to any of those other commissions should be presented to the council, not just the mayor simply. What about the, the number of applicants saying there can't be more than three guests per bedroom? Again, that doesn't apply to any other short-term or long-term rentals or any other homeowner. So I mean, if we have someone that, a homeowner that has 15 people in their house for Thanksgiving dinner, you know, are we going to send somebody by and count them? Say, you've got too many people in the house? An emergency. I don't see, the septic issue has been removed from the ordinance, so the public health issue should be not be, public health should not be an issue since the septic system has been removed. I don't see the need for the emergency clause. I don't see any need for it to be passed today. That's what happened the last time, was it was pushed through. It was, it was, it was, as Councilman Wasniak referred to, it was a slip-in. You slipped in on us and then pushed through.
I'd never said that, so don't go implying I did, or even implied that. Don't go there.
You're going back to look at the record? You damn sure did.
No, don't go there.
Don't go there. I've done gone there, I haven't said that.
Well, prove it.
Well, hey, if we got to have the records brought up to prove it, well then that's what we do.
Yeah.
But that's what you said.
No.
So anyway, I do not see a need for the emergency clause and cannot support an emergency clause. I'm sure I'll have some other questions, but right now, I'll stop there.
May I ask a question to Jerry?
Yes, ma'am.
Jerry, could you clarify to me, when you said the denial and the right to appeal, currently would be going to the mayor, you wanted to go to the council as a whole? Okay.
Yes, because all other denials, Planning Commission, all the other commissions, any denial there comes to the council.
Appeals, okay.
I'm going to say, I mean, I know this conversation could go on for a while, so I don't know, this might not be my first comment, I don't know. Initially, I was pretty ambivalent about, you know, the new proposal. I was pretty supportive of appealing and taking it to the State Supreme Court. You know, I don't know if there have been some changes made recently due to a death of a Supreme Court member, and that person has been replaced by a member of the Republican, I believe he headed up the Republican State Committee or something like that, right? So I don't know, you know, just politically, I don't know, you know, what the success would be of that. And make no mistake, this, this has become a political conversation, it really has. And I would say, maybe I shouldn't go there, but what's really fascinating to me is I attended all three House committee meetings of city, county, public affairs, and so what I found fascinating is support for SB 197 was to basically do away with any cities being able to enact any ordinance regulating short-term rentals. The support for that bill was mostly from Northwest Arkansas. They were your legislators that the public voted into office, and essentially those legislators did not listen to the public at all. They align with the short-term rental faction, if you will, and there are probably various reasons for that. I think a person wouldn't have to search too hard to be able to figure out what's maybe behind some of those decisions or some of that support. But I'm not going to go there today, because I did my own research. I have a pretty good idea. So whenever you talk about inspections, you know, yes, those are taken away. However, I did talk to Mayor Flynn, I talked to Chief Sims, and I also talked to Jason about potential for a volunteer inspection program of the short-term rentals that you could or could not participate in. It would be, I'm talking about with you, I'm talking about a short-term rental owner. If you desire that your property is not inspected, that's fine, but if you would like to have your property inspected, and the inspection list, it could be by the one that we developed for the short-term rental ordinance, which is very simple and is very straightforward. I don't think it's overburdening, so you could do that. Again, if you don't want to, you don't have to. Chief Sims actually developed an inspection program, I don't know how many years ago it was, how many, about chief, five, six years ago? About five years ago, proposed it to Vacation Rentals, which is no longer in operation as far as short-term rentals are concerned, asked if they would be interested in being part of that program, they were, and I believe he did about 300 inspections of their vacation rentals, is that correct? Yeah. So there wouldn't necessarily be like a fail or pass. I asked about maybe issuing some type of a certificate, you know, that said that this short-term rental has participated in this inspection program and passed, and you could advertise that on your advertised page in VRVO, Airbnb, or whatever that might be, or, and you could also display it in your short-term rental if you would so desire. That's up to you. And even if you had some recommendations of some things that could be done, needed to be done to that property to make sure that its safety was in line with whatever the qualifications may be, whatever that form would look like, you could either choose to do those or not do those. You know, we wouldn't post it anywhere or anything like that, just be solely up to the short-term rental owner. As far as long-term, short-term rentals, they are different in the fact that long-term rentals are permanent residents of the city. Short-term rental, people are not, they are transient, they come and go. They come and go every one, two, three days, maybe every week, and then you've got another group that comes in again. So they're constantly on a rotating basis where long-term renters are not. As far as the AP and A and P taxes are concerned, most of the A and P taxes are now being collected because we have an agreement with VRVO and Airbnb. I believe there's another online booking agency we have an agreement with as well. I happen to be the chair of the Advertising and Promotion Commission. I said I have never been opposed to short-term rentals in Bella Vista. I do think they need regulation in place, definitely. If you listen to our constituents who are the residents of Bella Vista, you will hear that loud and clear. So there's a lot of support in that regard from the residents of Bella Vista. But if you don't, if you don't advertise for bookings on one of these websites, I'm not exactly sure how you would advertise your rental, I don't know, but the A and P provides the proof back to our CDS department who registers and, you know, collects permits so far, and I don't believe there is now like any difficulty in obtaining that proof. So you would either say, I advertise with either this or that booking agency, we know that tax is being collected. If you don't advertise, then, you know, they would have proof through receipts that they received the money, and most people would mail in a check, you know, in order to pay those taxes on their own. And we had a lot of people doing that before Airbnb and VRBO started collecting those taxes for us. So I'm not going to touch on every single portion of this ordinance right now. I will say too, as far as the septic is concerned, there are other ways that we can approach septic, not just for short-term rentals, but probably, you know, permanent residents in Bella Vista. We have a, I'm going to call it a wastewater committee that we formed. There have been some conversations being held at Village Wastewater. I've had some conversations with some other people as well. I happen to be on that committee, and we're just gathering information right now about that. And I had a conversation the other day with the gentleman, the chairs, our, oh shoot, our commission meeting for Monday night, Planning Commission.
Planning Commission.
About the city being involved in septic system management, if you will, you know, providing variances and things like that, and should the city even be involved in that aspect, and maybe doing a change to an ordinance that we currently have written where we basically would lean on or rely on the Arkansas Department of Health to manage septic systems in Bella Vista. So anyway, there's a lot of stuff going on. I've kind of talked on a lot here, but I wanted to reply to some of the comments. I will say that, again, I was ambivalent about the new proposal initially, but I'm on board with it now.
Mayor, may I, just one point of information that had not been brought up, and I want to make sure that it's, everyone understands. In Section 8 of the proposal, this has to do with applicability of the ordinance, and so I just want to make sure that this is clear, that even if you adopt this ordinance, it will be null and void unless prior to 60 days from the date that you publish this, you repeal the other ordinance. So if you do not adopt an ordinance that repeals the existing ordinance, this ordinance is void. So it only comes into effect if you repeal the existing ordinance, which is the second item on your...
Thank you for that point. I did want to mention, a couple people brought it up. You know, I'm not against looking into long-term rentals if somebody on council wants to bring something forward. I was thinking about the last year when I was on city council and being mayor. In that time, I have received many, many complaints about short-term rentals, many. I still get them, I get them every, every week or two, I get a new one, and a lot of times, people don't know anything about this, don't know anything about the ordinance, the lawsuit, they just say, hey, the short-term rentals around me and they're bugging me. They don't even know any of the background at all. And in that time, in the last year, I have received zero complaints about long-term rentals. So it's just one, you know, the reason short-term rentals was brought up is because citizens brought it up, that's what caused all this. Anyway, Larry or Mr. Wasniak, did you want to...
No, I didn't raise my hand, go ahead, Larry.
No.
I didn't raise my hand. I have nothing to say yet.
Oh, go ahead, Larry.
Okay. I was going to ask about the Section 8, Attorney Kelly. The 60 days, what's the significance of that if the emergency clause is adopted? Is there any?
So if you adopt the emergency clause, then this ordinance becomes immediately effective, but only when you repeal the prior ordinance.
You have to repeal the other one, otherwise it's still...
If you adopt an ordinance that does not have an emergency clause, then it does not come into effect for 60 days.
Hence the statement in section eight.
So the effort was to, we don't presuppose anything, so you may repeal it, but not put an emergency clause on the repeal. You may adopt the proposal you have here, but not adopt an emergency clause. So just trying to account for, we don't know what you all are going to do. So I can tell you that if you adopt this proposal that's on, that you're debating right now, and you adopt an emergency clause, it does not take effect unless or until you repeal the other existing ordinance, which has currently been enjoined and cannot be enforced.
And I might add, I was anticipating at least hopefully passing this tonight and repealing the other one tonight because, you know, Mr. Kelly has a time crunch as far as appealing.
Mayor, I, you talk about the people, the complaints that you have got, you know, what are those complaints? What, what is their complaint?
Well, they cover a wide range. As you know, several people complained about the one on Lockloman that was, you know, having 21 people sleep over and having parties and weddings, sometimes even weddings with live bands during the week, on weekday, things like that. And other people just, gee, there's four houses around me, and now three of them are short-term rentals, and it's affecting my life. Some people are, you know, different people, you know, it covers a wide range of things. But, you know, I just want to, I do want to add, since you asked that, I thought it was unfortunate what happened last year, how things kind of broke into factions, and are you pro-STR or anti-STR? And, you know, there's a lot of motions involved, and I thought it was a little unfortunate. I, I get how you can get emotional about things, but I think what we need to try to do here is find some middle ground that's fair for everybody. And certainly, short-term rentals are, there's a lot of pluses to them, they're a significant part of our economy, and I don't look at them as the devil reincarnated or anything like that. So, you know, a lot of times people come, a lot of people staying in these short-term rentals are coming to Bella Vista to visit their relatives, and the relative's house isn't large enough. Are they coming here to attend a wedding? There's all kinds of different reasons. Some are coming to ride bikes, but, you know, there's a million different reasons, and they are serving a purpose, and, and there are a lot of pluses to them. So, you know, I don't want anybody to get all one way or the other about it, because, you know, there's two sides to the story, definitely.
Well, you, you mentioned about the, about the complaints. I have also heard from a lot of people that have no complaints. They have a short-term rental next door, and they have no complaint about it. They say, hey, whoever owns the short-term rental, it was an old house or a house that was dilapidated, they fixed it up, and now it's the best house on the block. How many times that occurs, I don't know, but most of the complaints, again, are noise, parking. Noise and parking, that's basically kind of the two that you just mentioned. We already have ordinances to deal with those, with the parking and the noise. So why do we need something else to deal with that particular issue? And as far as people who have no problem with short-term rentals, I wouldn't expect them to be calling you and saying, hey, I don't have a problem. I mean, that's all you're going to hear from is those people that have a complaint. You're not going to hear from people that have no problem with them. And as Mr. Fowler said, he is the chairman of the A&amp;P Commission. You know, the A&amp;P Commission is advertising Discover Bella Vista, but yet we are somehow trying to make these people that have invested in short-term rentals, the people who have moved here and have taken their savings and bought a house or a house, two houses, however many they've bought, and restored them, remodeled them for a, a means of income to support their, their retirement. And, and the manner in which we previously, the previous ordinance, I mean, obviously detrimental to a lot of the, to the efforts of trying to do that, but A&amp;P Commission advertises Discover Bella Vista, so, and they've done a very good job at it because we have been discovered. And those people who come to Bella Vista, they need a place to stay here.
Can I ask you a question? Is this an ordinance to deny short-term rental businesses in Bella Vista? Are we trying to close them down? Are we trying to shut them down? Is that what this is about?
No, that's not what it's about. No, that's not what it's about. The previous ordinance, in my opinion, was an effort to shut them down.
That's absolutely wrong.
Well, that's, again, that's my opinion.
Well, that's fine, everybody has an opinion, but in my opinion, that's not true.
Okay, well, you're entitled to your opinion.
Well, so are you.
I, again, I don't agree with this ordinance, and I cannot support it.
Did you want to say something, Jim?
Yeah. I know, we're just making bones out of moles again. All we're really asking for is a name and an address, nothing else. We're not asking you to do anything special anymore, we just want to know who you are. I don't know where the problem is with that. I really don't. And then, of course, had we been enforcing what's there, the parking and the noise, we wouldn't be here, we would be there. And somewhere on somebody's badge or whatever, it doesn't say pick and choose, says protect and serve. And if we go ahead and enforce what we got, I think we'd be just fine. I think we'd be just fine. But I still don't, you know, Mayor, don't have a problem with, oh, we want to know who you are, that's it. Not going to do anything else with the information, just want to know who you are. The fee's a little steep for only asking you for your, for your name and stuff, but that's all we're asking for, is who are you? Just in case we need to get ahold of you somewhere down the road, or if your house is a habitual violator, that we can work something out to make sure that doesn't continue.
And I would support an ordinance of that nature.
Okay. Is anybody ready to make a motion to go to?
I've got a couple comments.
Go ahead, Larry.
I've been listening, listening to all of this floating around. There's a lot of stuff to float around in your head. So we've identified literally by permits issued and permits pending, about 200 and about 300 properties, about 300 properties, 149 plus 144 is about, about 300. I think the identification is somewhere short of 500 to date that have been identified.
I looked at it this morning, 5:06.
Yeah, so we're about 500, so we're, we're a couple hundred short of, of getting the attention of, of the other 200 or so owners. I think I'm ambivalent about, about regulating businesses in general, but we, most communities around regulate in-home businesses, and they may not regulate them to a great extent. And I think a great extent would be, well, you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't do something else. Most of those can't do's in the in-home business permission have to do with parking, the fact that you don't have any employees other than the immediate family who lives there, you don't have, you don't have merchandise that you show and sell on the property, it's typically there for inventory or display that you pick and choose from, and then it's ordered. So really, STRs, LTRs are, are in-home businesses because it's not an owner occupied, full-time residence like all the others are. Now, granted, a resident may be on vacation six months out of the year, but it's still his home. The new ordinance addresses some of the complaints that we received at the public input session back in March of 2022, and other personal complaints that I've received. I know that other councilmen have reported receiving similar complaints on their own, as Mayor Flynn addressed earlier today. I think the new ordinance attempts to address those complaints, and certainly the complaints that were registered in the 2022-18 ordinance that we adopted, and remove some of the objections that were in there, the complaints about it. I think that while the usage is similar in STRs and LTRs to owner occupied, there is a, there is a subtle difference, and the subtle difference is really in large part the management. I know Councilman Snow referenced properties where no complaints were heard from the neighbors because it's an STR. And, and granted, I have STRs in my neighborhood, I, I do not see, at least at this point, the relatively new ones across the street that just started up after our ordinance was adopted. Haven't seen anybody there, actually, in the property. So whether it's in operation or not, whether they've applied for the permit or not, I don't know, the owner is an out-of-state owner. I do agree that to support the emergency clause, if this moves forward by the majority of the council today, and I am in general support of the focus and the coverage of the ordinance that's here. I have one question for the attorney, it's a technical question maybe, but in section five, paragraph A, the last line on page two, property owners may be cited and fined for violations. I don't know if that needs to be an and slash or, fined? Could they be fined? Could they be cited but not fined? Could they, they be cited and fined?
If they're found not guilty.
If they're cited, are they going to be fined?
No, if they're cited, they could be found not guilty, so they wouldn't necessarily be fined.
Okay.
But it's a notice, you, this is, so you need to back up. This is the posting requirement, and so it just, it's a statement that would, it would say that, it would be a notice that guests, local points of contact, or property owners may be cited and fined, they may be cited and they may be fined for violations of any applicable city ordinance. So that, it, it's just a notice, and so the distinction you're making, I think, would probably make it more confusing.
Right.
If that's possible. I don't know.
No more, no more comments.
I have one more thing.
Okay.
One thing that I did hear at the hearing, and I think, you know, we didn't put it into that I would be in favor of. You know, there's concern as you roll from year to year, that everybody would have to get in line again, or, because first of all, you know, we're 100 shy of the 600 that we have set, okay? So I don't know if there's any danger in that anyway. But if somebody has been issued a permit for, you know, STR business in Bella Vista for like 2023, when we go to 2024, unless there has been some type of violation or violations, or their permit has been revoked, I think that those people should be able to just, you know, go ahead and renew their permit for the following year, without having to get in line again, you know, and start the process all over again. So I would propose an amendment to the ordinance, not today, I don't want to do that today, but I would.
Okay, because any amendment has to be in writing, and if you're not doing it today, then don't move it today.
I understand that. I'm not doing it today, that's what I just, I'll, I'll do it later. I just would say I would be in favor of that, you know, so people wouldn't have to be concerned if I got a permit this year, goes to next year, and now if I've been operating for a year, or whatever it is, two years, I'm concerned I may not get it next year because somebody may beat me to the, the door, you know, before I get there, and there's just 600 are gone, so.
I don't think that would happen, but I, we can talk about it if you bring it up later.
Yeah. That was raised as a concern, Jason, but I don't see it in the near term as being a problem, but in the long term, it might be.
Mayor, I got just a quick question. Mr. Fowler, Mr. Fowler said that we have 500 and something now?
506 are advertising.
Okay, how do we, how do we know that number?
We have a company that compiles that information for us called Granicus. There are several companies out there that do that, they're in that business.
I, I should mention, just as a clarification, you know, I mentioned before, there's 149 permits issued, 17 of those are owner occupied, and the 144 pending two are owner occupied. Significance of that is the owner occupied don't count toward the 600 limit, they're exempt from that, so. So the 600 will go a little further than it appears perhaps.
Mr. Mayor, just to chime in on this, I guess I'm, I'm having a struggle with what the problem is, short of basically just asking for general information, filing fee, you know, occupancy that is, that falls in line with the fire code, correct? Determining the benefit of that. Right. You know, and it, and it provides relief in plain language if a neighbor or anybody in any neighborhood has a problem. So I mean, it doesn't restrict, it doesn't, I mean, to me, it is basically, this is the ordinance, if you have a commercial property, which an STR is, and that's what everybody needs to keep in mind, you know, it's a, it's just like Mr. Welms pointed out, you know, just like running a business out of your, out of your house. I mean, it's, it's the same thing, so you have parking restrictions, you have, you know, the, the same language that is in any kind of commercial venture inside of any individual's house. This just puts in plain language recourse for problems, it's permitting fees, and it's basically just asking who you are, what your property number is, and, you know, contact information, etc. So I, I really struggle with all this language or conversation, that this is restrictive or limiting access or whatever that it is, but the way that it reads, I'm in full support of this ordinance proposed today.
Mayor, I might say that this entree refers to it as a commercial establishment. I think courts have already determined that a residence, just because it's being rented, is not a commercial establishment, it's still a residence.
How do you define, okay, so, and not to, to get in front of you here, but you're talking about a property, some of these properties are turning unbelievable profits.
Yes.
They're basically a microtome, right? I mean, they, they're, they're getting rented out every day, or every two, three days or a week, so that, that is not a, that's not a personal private residence, it is a commercial business if they have an LLC attached to that. You don't have one individual owning that home, you have a company owning that home, correct? A corporation running that house as a commercial venture. So we don't need to blur the lines between commercial and residential and all these things that you, you want to theorize, they're in the business of making money, right? So it's a commercial business.
I'm, I'm not blurring the line, I'm just telling you what, I think, and I don't, Mr. Kelly will agree with that or disagree with it, courts have already determined that a residence is still a residence with it's rented, just because it's being rented does not change the status of it being a residence.
I'm glad you asked, because that Supreme Court case had to do with the interpretation of some covenants in another part of the state, and a restriction in those covenants. Had nothing to do talking about what the authority of a city government is, nothing, nothing. Now, I know the people that are advocating that side of the case want to make more of it than it is, but I'm just going to tell you, that's what, that's what the case is about. It's not going to do this council any good to debate what the Supreme Court meant in an opinion, okay? I'm just going to tell you that right now. We may learn, but, and it certainly may be an issue, has been an issue, may continue to be an issue, but we do not concede that at all.
But my point is, I think that the way that this ordinance reads in its current form is basically asking for the bare minimum of anything that you would ask, period. I think it's very reasonable.
Well, basically, I, I attended the hearing, and I took out every single thing anybody complained about. So that was at the hearing, but there were several witnesses. And you know what I was talking before about how everybody's acting like this side or that side? Some of the witnesses for the plan- side? Some of the witnesses for the plaintiff are good friends of mine, really good friends, people I've known for years, played tennis with. And, you know, so it's not all, and I was talking to him during the breaks in the case, about tennis, not about the case. So it's, you know, it's not all this all day long. So, anyway, does anybody want to make a motion to move to third and final?
So moved.
Second.
That was Mr. Wilms and Mr. Wozniak.
Motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading, is that correct?
Yes.
No, that was first.
Yeah, the motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Larry, that's right. You're the one that made the motion, right?
We didn't have a motion to adopt yet, did we?
No.
To suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Okay. Roll call, vote on that.
Is that the first step, suspend the rules?
Stop. It is the pending motion to suspend the rules and go to a third and final reading of item A on the special leave of the chairman. Is that the motion?
My question is, is that the protocol that we need to do to adopt this?
It's not a protocol. I'm trying to verify what the motion on the floor is.
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion?
Yes, Mr. Wozniak.
I just want to clarify for the minutes what we're, we're voting on.
Thank you.
I need to clarify something.
What? Not only that, suspend the rules to be by item B.
Okay. A roll call vote.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
No.
Hansel?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
And Hughes?
No.
Motion passes four to two. I'll read it for the third time. Providing regulations for the operation of short-term rentals, providing a permit requirement, limiting the number of active permits which may be issued, providing occupancy limits, providing penalties in a process for revocation of permits for violations, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Hansel and Mr. Wozniak. Roll call, vote on a motion to approve.
Councilmember Wilms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Snow?
No.
Hansel?
Yes.
Hughes?
No.
And Fowler?
Yes.
Motion passes four to two.
Mayor, we need to have a separate motion on adoption of the emergency clause.
Yes. Is there a motion for adoption of an emergency clause?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Wilms and Mr. Hansel. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Wilms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Snow?
No.
Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hughes?
No.
Yeah, motion passes four to two for the emergency clause. Now we have another ordinance, repealing ordinance number 2022-18 as amended concerning the regulation of short-term rentals, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes. And do we need a motion for third and final for this?
Make a motion to suspend the rules, go to third and final. Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel.
So that was a motion to suspend the rules and place item D on third and final reading.
Yeah. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
No.
A motion carries five to one. I'll read it for the third time. Repealing ordinance number 2022-18 as amended concerning the regulation of short-term rentals, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Snow? Hughes?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Do we need an emergency clause on this?
We need a motion, a second, to adopt the emergency clause. So moved.
Second.
That was Mr. Wilms and Mr. Fowler. Roll call, vote on the emergency clause.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
We're voting on the emergency clause, right?
Yes.
No.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to one. So I think we're, our business is done. Thank you all for your attendance and your comments and whatnot. I appreciate it. Thank you. Meetings adjourned.